Well, we can start some of the things. We. Any more updates?
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe I can think of something to talk about. I just got, Steve Heath just gave me further explanation about how he came up with his salary line.
Okay.
Um, this is hot off the presses about 10 minutes ago.
Why don't I officially open the meeting then?
Yeah.
It's four o'clock. So as is common now, the meeting will occur over Zoom, video phone teleconference, per the allowance under the governor's emergency order number 12. That waived the requirement of having a quorum of the board physically present for a public meeting. We encourage those who would like to participate, to please call the number listed below. So that was admitted. You're still up Charlie?
Uh, and I can read this off and I'll, I can scan it and send it to everyone.
Okay.
He came up with this by the average hourly per diem rate is $15.60. Well, if you do a nine hour shift for one firefighter a day, that equals $140.40. If you multiply that by two, it comes up to 20, 280, 80. Multiply that by 365 days equals 102,492. Okay. But then you have to add in the call payroll, which is 40,914. The chief salary, which is 39,000 and the deputy is 5,000. But as with what we've been doing or what I've been recommending for everyone is the 3% cola across the board. In particular, the fire department because those guys haven't had one for a couple of years now. So you get up to 193. I don't know how you got, I still don't know how you got 195, but he's closer. Right? So the 187,406 times 1.03 is 190, 193028.
Okay. We do have to figure out, ladies and gentlemen of the board, how we want to proceed with this budget. Um, and that I will leave. Are we going to go page by page? Line by line? Uh, what is your, what is the board's pleasure?
I think we should just talk about anything that we want to revisit and do it department by department. And then, um, you know, vote on it on the department. I don't think we need to go line by line unless there are some questions about any, anything that we differ from Charlie's proposed budget.
Any other?
No, I agree with Fran.
Yeah, I'm good with that approach.
Same here.
Okay. Uh. So what I will do is share the screen. There we go. Um, the screen is up.
I'll be able to see it in about five minutes.
Yep.
Okay.
So we've got another five minutes to.
So what are we looking at executive?
Well, actually, this is the totals of the budget. Right this sec. Um. So. We can keep talking amongst ourselves until you get to see it. Fran.
Okay. Well, I mean, like I said, you should put up department by department and have anybody look at any particular line that they might disagree with and discuss it that way rather than looking at the bottom line.
This.
And if there's nothing in that department to discuss, then we vote on the bottom line.
Okay. Is that how?
That's.
Which department would you like to start with? Shall we start with executive?
Start at the beginning. That's executive as far as I can recall.
It is. So the executive should be on the screen now. Can you all see it?
Yep.
Okay, going down. Is there anything that jumps out at you? That you would want to change in this on the executive budget?
Well, it's quite a bit less than. Yeah, from my recollection of the discussion, there was nothing in particular that I thought was a problem.
Yeah, I'm. I'm comfortable with executive.
I'm out of my car right now as we speak and it's a computer.
Okay. One general question I have is why is the internet cable so different on so many of the so different in each of the departments? Why aren't we more uniform with our cable bill?
Uh, well, for the town under executive is because it's fiber.
Okay.
And everyone, all the other departments are under, um, spectrum.
But I mean, we have a difference in, in some of them from $1,200 down to $800.
Some could still be on the old plan. Uh, when I tried to, when I first started, we had problems with the internet because these phones were on VoIP. And I upgraded the, uh, the internet service through Spectrum. I think it was Time Warner, but whatever. Um.
Eli, could you let me in?
If I can find you. Oh, come on. There we go. You're in or should be.
Thank you.
Okay, there you go. Sounds better too. So, um, when I changed the internet for the town office, this is before we got fiber. Uh, they went ahead and changed our bill. Uh, and told me that we were grandfathered under the old rate until we made a change of service.
Okay.
It's like a higher speeds. They, that's when they took the opportunity to give us a new bill.
Okay, so we're going to change nothing on executive.
So we need a motion for a bottom line of 138,264 for executive?
Uh, the only thing that I, after I go back and look at it, um, we might have to change that postage because there's only $250 left as of September. And if you look at the average, there's 1,200.
Okay.
You see it Eli?
Yeah.
The last column.
Well, I'm, I'm looking.
Very, yeah, line 28.
Yeah, why did you put 700? That seemed awfully low.
It could have been at the time when I prepared this. Um, again, the philosophy was when I prepared this, uh, was I took the average and then I looked at the expenditure report and tried to do a forecast as to what we might spend the rest of the year. Uh, and then from there going off that being the budget number.
Then I think we ought to, ought to change it right now before we vote on it because I think it's way low now that you mention it.
Yeah. So what I'm, I, I, I got the, when I did this Fran, I probably had the August report and now we've got the September report.
Okay.
And postage has been hit. And that's what, so everyone knows it's kind of a tough one to peg for everyone. And what I mean by that is the machine in the office, uh, has all the departments, but finance has to run the report and then go ahead and go to each department and deduct that amount.
Okay.
Right?
So what are you asking for Charlie?
Huh?
What are you asking for?
Oh, I would say at least the, probably the 1,300. Because if we did 1,200, we averaged 1,200, might as well just keep it at 13.
Yeah, I mean, that's the default anyway. So.
Yeah.
All right. So now we need a motion for 138,864. Is that, did that reflect that?
Well. 138,864 is the total.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Wait a minute. If we're adding in the extra money for the postage, that's going to change.
Didn't it automatically add?
Yes.
Okay, so that it did change.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'll take it out again.
It's correct.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to add it back in.
I'm looking at the, the piece of paper, not the screen.
Wow, yes. Andy, it won't change on your paper yet.
No, it won't.
Well, it will when I get done my math.
All right. You'll get an updated one, Andy, I'm sure.
Okay.
All right. So I made the motion for 138,864.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call. Alan Silly.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Eli Badges says aye. Moving on. We have the election ballot. Election and register clerk salary longevity. That's page two.
Hmm.
Why is the deputy clerk salary 500?
Because you'll find, I think you're going to find her deputy clerk salary is 500 here. And if we look at assistant tax elector, it's going to be another 500.
Right.
I just don't know what they do for that.
Well, so far, nothing.
Thank you, Fran.
See it.
And that's my observation too.
Well, you know, I mean, that's another question that we have to discuss whether or not it gets paid, but the, the salary is listed at $1,000 divided.
Yes.
Okay, I got you.
Finance on, and under finance on line seven or ending in 131, excuse me, yeah, so it's $500.
Hmm.
So there's your $1,000.
Right.
Okay. So we're back here. We're back to the election and register. Now Charlie's given her $172 raise in her salary line. And about an $1,100 raise in her longevity.
Why did we, oh, this, okay, yeah, yeah, never mind.
Well, what I did was 3% across the board for all employees.
Yeah, no, that's.
Unless you have a contract. Uh, other than that, I kept it, which again, what the union has, the union has a 2% cola and a 1% step increase. So it's 3%.
Okay, we went down this road last year as an elected official. She's not an employee.
Right. Um, we, we've gone over this for the last several years, as long as I've been on the board.
Um, we decided last year to, uh, give her the longevity lines and not a cola.
Well, it was, it was before then. Oh, you mean, you mean keep it at 9, 1,900? Yeah. Yeah.
If she, if she, if she, if she wants an increase, she should go to the legislative body and request it like she did a few years ago.
Hmm.
Yeah, the, the other thing is the longevity line that I put in is increased because we didn't put the, the tax collector got a raise after the budget.
So the 720, 7020 is closer to what she actually gets?
That's it. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Makes up the.
Yeah, I wondered why the big jump.
So you gave her a raise after we voted just to put.
No, no, I did not.
We, we voted as a board to give her a raise.
In the longevity line?
No, in the longevity line, yes, we did.
Yeah, last year after, after the budget was passed and it was in the budget.
That's right. It wasn't in the budget. And we voted to add it to the budget.
So the, the, the raise was given after the budget had passed. It wasn't a, it was a raise that wasn't budgeted for.
Right.
So that's why I'm putting it, I put it back in there. Plus the 3%, you know, plus the 3%.
Right. I don't agree on the cola. You know, her duties are defined by statute. So her job is she's elected to perform a certain set of tasks, which is defined by statute.
But we set the salary and, and we have split it because she was making more than, I mean, the argument originally for splitting it out into salary and longevity, that if Susie Smith, who, you know, just graduated from high school, decided to run for town clerk and had zero experience, we wouldn't want them her earning what Patsy has earned through, after all of the years of service. That just didn't seem right. So we split out the salary and the longevity, the longevity she got because of all of the years of service. So we, we were just trying to make that a distinction so that you know, if, when, if and when she retires and somebody else steps in, they will get the clerk salary, but not the longevity.
So you're saying she did, that she deserves both?
Well, she does deserve both because we, we cut out a significant amount of her salary and put it and, and separated that out from longevity. We left a baseline clerk salary. So that again, if somebody else takes that position, they're not earning all of what she has earned.
So we, we keep it at 19,000 plus the longevity lines.
Yeah. So the, the question is, I mean, do you even want to add the 3% to the, the clerk salary? Um, I have no issue with that because, you know, 19,000 um, several years ago was, shouldn't be the same salary as they'd get now. I mean, you'd expect because of cost of living that the base salary would go up. So I have no issue with adding 3% to that, but.
Fran, the voters should decide on that.
Well, I, I understand that, but it's, you know, we've run into this issue every year. She did put in a Warren article once to ask for an increase and she didn't get it. Um. Again, we're, we're caught between a rock and a hard place here. I, I understand what you're saying, but yeah, you know, we ended up voting her a raise, not as much as, you know, she had wanted obviously. Um, but we ended up voting her a raise.
Yeah.
So I don't want to, I don't want to get another phone call this year accusing me of causing physical stress because of decisions we made.
Right.
You know, I'm, I'm not going to forget that. So.
I understand, and that's why I'm okay with the increases. Um, because ultimately someday she will retire and we'll be cutting that salary line way back to some baseline. Um, and you know, all of the other things that we've sort of set as precedence or one offs will no longer be applicable.
Yeah. A couple of other things. The, uh, where is it from? Uh, election salary down, uh, at, that's advertising expense posted. That's actually, we received that budget from the supervisor of the checklist.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I've, I mean, I, I don't think there should be any issues with all of those that it costs what it costs to run an election.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify.
Sure.
And, um, the, the, well, of course, the federal elections this year, so.
Um, we're talking about next year.
Yeah, next year we'll only have one election.
Hmm.
So I, without seeing, um, okay, so clerics, yeah, have they been decreased because of the decrease in number of elections?
Yeah, next year. Yeah. Yep.
Doesn't look, I mean, voted 2020 was 3,700 for clerk expenses and it's still 3,700.
No, I was talking about the salaries, the election salaries.
Oh, that, okay. All right, all right, sorry. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, that's, no, that's good.
And the ballot code in is, uh, there's a portion that's reimbursed for that from.
Okay, well, that's about cut in half. So that's, that's good.
If, going back to the clerk salary longevity line, if we added 3% to the longevity line, it would make it six, about $6,100.
What Charlie said was, oh, wait a minute. How, yeah, how come the department request is 5926?
Cause she just put last year's in.
Okay, but what, but you, I thought you said last year she had more than that.
No, we put in the.
If memory serves, if memory serves, she asked for more than that last year.
Yes.
Okay, so it's 3% over, okay.
We at that time
Hmm.
decided to give her $500 in the longevity line.
Okay.
And no increase in salary.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, what Charlie did after that, um, so we did increase her salary, uh, her longevity line. Now her longevity line is going up.
Yeah, so why is.
20.
Yeah. And that's more than 3%?
That particular, in this particular instance, if you take the 5926 and add 3% to it, it comes out to be about $6,100 and she's getting a, a thousand more dollars in there.
So where did the 7020 come from Charlie?
Well, like I said, the poor, you've had two years in a row that you haven't put anything in her budget and she's gotten a raise after.
Who gave her the raise?
You.
The selectman did.
Charlie, you did give her a raise after we voted.
Oh, did no.
Not to.
No, I would never give, I would never give an employee a raise after this.
Cause we did Charlie, who, how else did it get there? We did, we did not give her a raise.
All right, I'll go back and pull that in the minutes and I can actually go and look at the personnel file.
Well, that's fine. I'm.
I would never go ahead and go.
Charlie. Selecting. Charlie, all, alls we need is an answer where, um.
What last year's salary was.
We got, we, we guys are trying to do it on memory alone.
Right. I have no issue with adding 3% to this year's salary, whatever that final number.
I can pull Patsy in and ask her.
Well, what, she put in 5926.
So then why don't we, it's been give her what she asked for.
I have no problem giving her the 7,000. Um, because it is in the longevity line.
Yeah. It's, it's the top line. It's line number four.
So.
If, if that need, if that, if she wishes to have that change, that's when she goes to the legislative body and asks them, ask them to vote for a raise for.
And I don't, uh, you know, if we added three, if we added 3% to the.
She doesn't get 3% added on to her longevity lines plus her base salary.
Yeah.
That, that just doesn't make sense.
Just.
You're, but you're not, you're not properly budgeting the line. It's going to go negative again. Uh.
How did it go negative?
What do you mean negative?
Yeah.
If we added 3%.
The longevity line right now as of September, October 1st has 11% left. It should have 21%. It is 10% under budgeted from 5926.
What I want to know is what, you know.
And I can go get, hold on a second.
The final number of her this year's salary is.
I'll go poll, I'll go poll.
Okay, if, if we gave, if we gave this position a 3% raise from $1,900,
Hmm.
the figure would be 19,570.
So where did the 172 come from?
Yeah, the, the numbers don't add up.
No, they don't.
March 23rd, 2020, it says the rate, current rate was 2397. It went up to 2445. Effective 4/1/2020.
So what does that make her annual salary?
Well, if you take 24.45 times 52, whoops, excuse me, 52 times 40 equals 5856 times. You wouldn't.
What?
Oh. 24.45 times 40 times 52 is 50,856. And then you're going to divide it up into.
And we have to divide it into half.
Four lines.
Half and then actually to four different lines.
Yeah.
Ah.
So the 1,900 was lon, was salary. The rest of it, I mean, 1,900 times two was salary.
Was 38.
Yeah, and then the rest of it is longevity divided by.
Longevity would have been another 12 grand approximately.
Yeah.
Yeah, divide that by two equals 6428 per. Like I said, it wasn't, it wasn't budgeted.
Right. So that.
We gave. We gave her five hundred dollars in each line in longevity.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep. That, again, wasn't budgeted.
Right.
It wasn't budgeted.
It wasn't voted on in the original budget. It was after the election. We went back and we've done that for other, other positions where, you know, the default was in play or whatever. We decided that as a board, we had the, the right to increase.
Alright.
So that's what happened. We went after the fact instead.
Patsy came to us and asked us for more money.
Right.
I thought she went to the budget committee and asked for more.
Well, she did that too. She asked us and then she asked.
It was during the budget process that we did this.
And we gave her a, a, an increase, not as much as she wanted.
That's right.
We gave her five hundred dollars in each of the two, two longevity lines.
On April sixth, twenty twenty, April sixth, twenty twenty.
And that's when it went into effect.
Yeah.
We asked it for, she previously asked for three percent. And instead, the board gave a five hundred dollar pay increase on each longevity line.
Right. So we have to take what we voted on finally, even though it wasn't budgeted and add three percent to that for this year. I mean, we don't have to. I mean, that's what you're proposing. Cause everybody else is getting three percent. We gave less than three percent last year.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Okay.
So why don't we, since she re, why don't we give what she requested? She picked that number for a reason.
Why?
Well, it's less than she's earning now. I just.
Not enough.
It, it's, yeah, it's less than she's earning now, and I don't know why she put down fifty nine twenty six. It should actually say, um, you know, what she's earning now plus three percent under the town manager. That's my take. I, I don't know why she put fifty nine twenty six.
I have no idea why she did that. Um, I don't find it outrageous. What I was looking for was an explanation.
Right.
Of this. Um, because I don't know, I don't understand how if nineteen hundred dollars going up to nineteen one seventy two doesn't come close to a three percent.
Why don't you leave the salary line at nineteen hundred as the base? And let's just figure out what she earned for longevity last year and add three percent, what she really earned, not what, what was voted on. And add three percent to that.
Well, last year is twenty three point nine seven times forty times fifty two would been forty nine thousand eight seven point six. Again, if you take off the nineteen thousand twice, which is eighty thousand.
Oh, why did that passport make such a mess of this?
Maybe we should move on and come back to this.
Oh, if you, well, hold on a second, though. If you go back to what I just said, then that's there, right? So if you say she made last year twenty three ninety seven, twenty three ninety seven is a forty nine thousand eight fifty seven salary. If you take out the nineteen, the, that means the longevity line would be five twenty eight. And we had five fifty nine twenty six, sorry, fifty nine twenty eight, and we have fifty nine twenty six.
So that is what she earned last year?
Yep.
Okay. So.
Right, and then if you look at twenty nineteen, actual was six thousand ninety four. Again, all parties involved have under budgeted for this line.
Why was it, why was it more in twenty nineteen? Did, because we ended up with the default?
The, yeah, the amount wasn't budgeted and the position got another raise.
Okay, again, it should be whatever we finally gave her.
Yeah, that's, and that's why I put in, that's why I put in the, um, seven thousand was the budget for it. Cause I mean, you can clearly see it's, it's under budgeted since, well, twenty eighteen.
Right.
Even though you've given her a raise, you gave her a raise in twenty eighteen. Correct?
I'd have to go back and see when the board did it.
I mean, I mean, you just said that it was under budgeted in twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
Which means that you've looked at it to know that, but.
And, and again, the nineteen thousand, why nineteen one seventy two? Like Eli said, that's not three percent.
Wow.
Where did that number come from?
Well, split.
Split for what?
It's split on the, uh, between the two.
I, I don't understand why it split when the, uh, when the job was combined. Why isn't it, and, uh, why aren't they added together? Why are we still?
I don't.
They're two, two separate positions.
I agree, Kathleen. I've long, I've long disagreed with this. The argument that the next person that comes along is assuming that they're gonna get the longevity line in the salary line. It's not the case. I mean, we could. Budget.
Three percent.
Give out the raises.
This year, twenty twenty one should be nineteen five seventy.
Right. That's what I got.
So what you're saying, Eli, is only give her the three percent in this department?
No, I mean, it has, her entire salary should be up by three percent. It's just split into two different things, three percent.
Okay.
Okay.
Three percent half her salary.
We're gonna have the same conversation once we get over to finance.
Yeah, so let's figure it out now.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, right now, uh, I just want the figures to accurately report what we're doing.
I agree.
And.
Okay, so if you go, the, the current rate is twenty four forty five. If you add three percent to that, uh, you get for a salary of fifty two thousand three eighty two.
Okay, what are you adding that we're not?
Yeah, right.
The current pay rate is twenty four forty five. If you multiply that by one point zero three is three percent. Right? Then you add it out over the course of the year, forty hours a week, fifty two hours, fifty two weeks, excuse me, a salary of fifty two thousand three eighty two.
That's total, including salary and longevity.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, that's a total salary. Now, if you want to split it and have nineteen thousand dollars in salary and then longevity, it's however you want to split.
I have no problem adding the three percent to both lines. I, I really don't. I mean, nineteen five forty is not a high salary for a, a, a clerk, town clerk. Um, so I don't mind keeping that as a baseline.
It, it's just that I don't understand. I, Charlie, I'm just looking at, uh, what, three percent added on to nineteen thousand dollars is not nineteen one seventy two.
It's nineteen fi- five forty.
Five seventy.
Uh, five seventy, yeah, five seventy.
So I'm just.
Yeah, I.
Curious about.
Then it must have been in the, in the longevity. I mean, I.
Okay, why don't, why don't we move on and we'll come back to this?
Okay. Uh, so there's nothing else. There's the deputy clerk.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to finance.
Yep.
Uh, now.
Well, how come, how come Linda's didn't change?
Linda's didn't change, no.
Okay. So the salary of the tax collector is nineteen one seventy two.
Uh, yeah, and again, that should be nineteen five seventy.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
The next line down should have been longevity.
Oh, those have been out of order forever. I don't know why.
Tax collector law, okay.
They've always been this and I don't, but anyway, so. And the same number is here for longevity.
Same number, both sides.
If you make the, the tax, the salary line nineteen five, what'd you say?
Five seventy.
You're given more than a three percent raise.
Why?
Because if you add nineteen, what'd you say, five seventy, and then add in that longevity line of seven thousand, it equals fifty three thousand one eighty.
Well, I'm not sure the seven thousand is correct number. We, I don't think we, I haven't, haven't gotten comfortable with that number yet. If you add three percent to both, to all four segments, it only adds up to three percent of the total. Right?
Within pennies.
Within pennies. It adds the three, if you take the whole salary and add three percent, it will come out as the same as if you add three percent to each of the four segments.
If you go, Eli, do this, hit equal sign on that spreadsheet. And if you add nineteen one seventy two plus seven zero two zero, and you multiply that by two, it equals fifty two thousand three eighty four.
And what is her current salary now?
Fifty thousand eight fifty six.
So again, if that's her current salary, that's the number we should be using. And I don't know where the seven oh two oh came from, and I don't know where the five nine two six came from. That five nine two six isn't correct.
That's because Patty didn't know what three percent increase was.
Well, you know, that's.
The selectmen, again.
It doesn't matter, you know, the, the number that you should put in regardless of what she asked for is what she earned finally last year with any increases we gave her plus three percent.
Well, that's what I did.
But that's again, I, I, it, it, it's wrong. I mean, it looks wrong because I don't know what the number you're basing the three percent on.
On twenty four, twenty four forty five.
No, 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 just take it for the longevity, just that one quarter of the piece.
I will.
That's the number I'm looking for.
Okay.
And add three percent to that. That comes out to seventy twenty?
No, you weren't, you didn't. Fifty nine, from fifty nine twenty six to seven twenty is more because you gave, the board gave her a raise after the budget.
I understand that, Charlie. That's the number I'm looking for, not the fifty nine twenty six. I'm looking for what she actually earned, what we voted on her.
There is no actual on this listing.
That, there is none. There is last year's and there, then she put in, because she didn't understand it, last year's, but she was earning more than that. So the number that I wanna know is what is, what should she have put in? Based on, I mean, what was she really earning? Forget what was voted on. What was she really earning for that one line, financial?
Well, technically sixty four twenty eight.
That's the number I'm looking for, sixty four twenty eight.
Right, and if you add five hundred dollars to fif- that's fifty nine twenty six. Alright.
Good use of track. Okay, so it's sixty four twenty eight.
Now.
Times three percent equals that plus sixty four twenty eight equals six thousand six hundred and twenty one dollars. I don't know where the seven oh two oh comes from.
Can I control the screen or something and show this?
Yeah.
Because I don't know what more to explain. I mean, I'm starting to lean with Kathleen. Yeah, just go to, spare me the headache and just go get the salary voted upon.
Let me see, where would I go to do that, Charlie? Participants, let's go over here.
I mean, this position, I mean, this has been two years in a row that we have not.
I'm gonna make you co-host.
We haven't budgeted for this.
I, I understand that, Charlie, and I understand we gave her a raise, but.
Okay, can you play with this now?
You know, what she really, what we really wanna give her is a three percent raise, but it has to be based on what she actually was earning this current year.
Let me show you. Can you see this?
No, I mean, I can see it's a piece of paper. Can I read it? No.
Okay, this is the personnel action form.
Yeah.
Again, in twenty twenty, she made twenty three ninety seven. Effective April first, twenty twenty, the Board of Selectmen gave a thousand dollar increase that made her rate go up to twenty four point four five.
Per hour?
Per hour.
Okay, so that's good, fine. Then you did all your calculations and it comes out to what?
You times that by three percent and then you come up to the fifty two three eighty two.
Why don't we move on from trying to calculate this until we can see all the figures?
Uh, are we doing any, what are we doing now?
I don't know what any. I'm doing.
You're out. This.
Sorry, I can't, I don't think I can share my screen on this, but that's fine.
Oh, what are you on? On your, uh, let me stop sharing my screen. Now see if you can share your screen.
Um, gosh, I don't even know how to, how do I do that? Oh. Huh. Can you guys see that?
Yep.
Yep.
That's nifty. Sorry. Uh, let's see, twenty three. Uh, let's see, twenty-three. Fran there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm calculating.
Oh, well, I just calculated some of it for you if you look at.
Well, I'm seeing if, if mine comes up the same. All right, so the way I came up with it, I got for the salary line, it should be nineteen five seventy, and for the salary, for the longevity line, it should be sixty-six thousand six hundred and twenty, six thousand six hundred and twenty-one. That's what I calculated, based on what you told me the hourly rate was. Again, not, neither the seven oh two oh or the nineteen one seventy-two make any sense to me.
Okay, I. As you can see, I took twenty-four forty-five times one point oh three times forty times fifty-two.
Times one point oh three? What was that for?
That's the three percent.
Okay, I, I multiplied, I added three percent to twenty-four forty-five and multiplied it by forty, then by fifty-two. Right, should be the same.
What'd you get? Did you get fifty-two three eighty-two?
I got fifty-two three eighty-one, yeah, three eighty-one, three eighty-two, yep.
So if we do that, then, um, how do you want to split it then? Because you got, now you got four lines.
Yep, well, that's why, you know, I split it, I split it what it should have been last year, not the five nine two six, the nineteen thousand stays, but the five nine two six should have been sixty-four twenty-eight. And then three percent of that brought it up to whatever I just said. Brought it up to, yeah, should have been sixty-four twenty-eight, brought it up to sixty-six twenty, twenty-one.
So you said nineteen thousand, nineteen thousand, and what'd you say, sixty-two twenty-eight?
Sixty-two twenty-eight, I think that's what it was, yeah, sixty-two twenty, sixty-four. I got too many that, that last year, last year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the nineteen hundred, nineteen thousand should be nineteen five seventy. So if you add three percent to that, it's nineteen five seventy. And then it should be sixty-four twenty-eight. No, I'm sorry, sixty-six twenty, twenty-one, sixty-six twenty-one.
We're at the same number, Fran.
Yeah.
We just had different lines.
Well, yeah, well, that's why the, the numbers you put in don't make sense because you said you added three percent, but nineteen one seventy-two is not three percent, and the seven oh two oh is more than three percent.
No, 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 ma'am, I add, I did three percent to the rate, the twenty-four point four five.
Yeah, I did too, and it comes, it's not the same.
Well, if you add nineteen one seventy-two and seven oh two oh, multiply that by two, it's still fifty-two, sorry, I came up with fifty-two three eighty-four.
Okay, that's pennies. I don't care about that, but why, why are those numbers? That's what's, what I'm questioning, why you put less in the salary line and more in the longevity line?
Because we've always, like, I was going along, the theories that we did before was to hit the longevity line, not the salary line.
Okay.
And why?
Well, it comes out the same, so I'm okay with that.
It's all, you're right, it, after all, it's all the same. I can't tell you, Fran, why I put one seventy-two extra in the salary.
Okay, all right. Well, you know, I'm okay with that because as I said earlier, we don't want to make the, the, the base salary too high, again, based on experience, but on the other hand, you know, making it, making a nineteen five seventy is a little more realistic in today's dollars to give it as a base salary. But, you know, it's, it, we're splitting hairs here. Comes out to the same.
Same, yeah. Yeah, so what, what does the board think? How do you want to split these, these lines? I think that's the question now.
It just looks like you gave her more than three percent in one line and less than three percent in another. That's what's, you know, was bugging me.
He did.
Yeah, I know, he did. And I'd rather see it so that it's a little more.
I apologize, I, I can't remember why I split it.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Guys, well, can I share this to you?
I'll just say I like Fran's math.
Okay.
Sorry.
And as I said, someday she will retire and, you know, you can go back, the board can go back to figuring out what the logical salary is going to be, we'll get out of this whole longevity thing.
And they won't be treated like an employee.
Right, right.
So, on line four, what's the number we want to put in?
Nineteen five seventy.
Nineteen five seventy.
Okay, and on line eight?
Sixty-six twenty-one.
No, wait, oh, did he, hold on. Six, oh, you're over on that finance one.
And so we've got to go back to election and ballot.
Yep.
And put in nineteen five seventy.
Mm-hmm.
And what was it again?
Sixty-six twenty-one.
Six-six-two-one.
Right.
There we go.
And I want, you know, it to be clear to Patsy that we didn't decrease anything. We didn't, you know, because Charlie asked for seventy twenty, we didn't decrease it, we just put it in a different line, okay? So.
Well, I just changed, I mean, well.
You changed, you changed yours, okay, all right.
Okay, so, back to finance.
Okay.
It just looked like we were going at the same thing two different ways.
Exactly.
Okay, so.
I can put it back to what, man, it's, I'll just.
Well, be nice to us. Okay.
It would be nicer if we agreed, Charlie, just for argument's sake.
I'll leave it at nineteen five seventy, yeah.
Is there anything else in finance that we are?
Okay, I found this on the web first.
Shut up.
Uh-huh. Now the rest of it looks okay to me.
Uh, so are we going with town manager or department?
No, we're going with, we're neither. We're going with B O S. We're going with what town manager should have put.
Right, I give up. What is the bottom line?
Yeah, the bottom. No, so make, make the town manager nineteen five seventy. Eli, are you doing that or is Charlie doing that?
I did, it's still, it's still.
Five seven, it'll still come out the same, but we want the bottom line because all those other lines are in there, and then make the seventy twenty, sixty-six twenty-one. All right, so now the bottom line is a hundred and twenty-four one forty-one.
Is that what you have, Charlie?
Uh, well, yeah.
Um, how come the, the total, oh, that's only, never mind, yeah, so we need a motion for a hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred and forty-one for finance, right? Right?
That would work.
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Alan Silly.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Now.
Are we all done now?
Yeah. We, we gotta go back to elections because those same things, so.
And Charlie said that we would be all ready.
Yes. I knew that wasn't, wasn't gonna happen.
Okay.
We, we did the same number, we just had different way of looking at it.
Yeah, and I don't know why you looked at it the way you did, Charlie.
Charlie, we had the right way and you had the wrong way.
Three o'clock this morning.
Thank you for clarifying that, Eli. I know you meant well, Charlie.
Okay, that gives us forty thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Is that what you have, Charlie?
That's what I have here too.
Okay.
Okay, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Alan Silly.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. We are moving on to property taxation and legal.
You.
Okay. Revaluation of property, Charlie has put all the numbers in, and I'm not sure that we're gonna change those.
I have no intention of doing that.
Okay, anybody else? Shall we accept his numbers on revaluation of property, property taxation lines?
Yes.
Yeah, those are pretty easy because those were confirmed from C N P.
Yep.
Yep.
I'll accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Alan Silly.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Now we get to legal.
Oh, goody. We don't need that much money, for heaven's sake. What do we ever need legal for?
One more.
Yeah, all right, well, Walter Mitchell was comfortable with the fee.
Okay, good.
Keeping it there. Uh, he, it was much high, the, the total bill has been much higher, of course.
Of course.
But he looked at it and he said, well, that personnel policy that we did probably would have been about five or six thousand dollars. And he says, if you take that out, you'd, you'd probably be at thirteen fifty, he said, okay, why don't we just leave it?
Okay.
There's a little bit extra in there, and that's for, um, the town's still got a Supreme Court case for, uh, the assessment of the utilities.
Oh, okay.
And also remember that, uh, Charlie tried to tell us that this was going to cover, uh, planning board.
True. Okay.
Is that correct, Charlie?
Well, that and the unanticipated, uh, fund.
Anticipated fund, yes.
Contingency fund.
But that's, but planning board is also covered and under the legal.
Okay.
It's what you.
Right, yeah.
Integrated.
So thirteen fifty times, well, is sixteen thousand two hundred.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, legal's legal to me, right? I mean.
Legal's, that legal, I, I will agree with you.
I mean, if planning board, I understand, wants to have other counsel, uh, they're more than welcome, uh, but when we get the bill, we would expend it from that line.
Yeah, Z B A gets the counsel. Okay, uh, Charlie says twenty grand. Are we comfortable with that?
Yep.
Any kind, okay, I'll accept a motion.
Okay, moment moved.
Do I hear?
Seconded. Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Alan Silly.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye, moving on. Personnel administration. These numbers correct, Charlie?
Yes. Yep, those are the numbers, uh, the sick buyout, the health insurance for retirees, and the medical insurance.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve forty, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred and seventy dollars for personnel administration.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Alan Silly.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Fitch.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Moving on to land use.
If you remember, real quick on the personnel, that, I sent that out when we got the rate from, uh, Health Trust a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. Okay, we're at land use. We've noticed the one dollar of land use always comes up with the question, where are the land use applications fees accounted for?
Yeah, that, that gets, the bookkeeping on this has always been less than transparent, shall we say.
I mean, are you talking about the revenue?
Yeah, the revenue.
Well, the revenue is on the revenue sheet. This is expenditure.
It says land use, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get to revenue sometime.
Okay.
Um, yeah, don't cover your face, Charlie.
I, I, um, well, land use, site plan review fees, zoning board fees, uh, those are ready to begin under license permits and fees.
Yeah.
Land fees, uh.
But they're accounted for how?
They're accounted for on the revenue.
Okay, is it, is it a rollover? Does it still, do the fees roll over every year to the board?
No.
Okay, it goes into the general fund?
Yeah. Why, is there another fund they're supposed to go into that I don't know about?
I, I'll ask you to talk to Susan.
Yeah.
She'll explain.
I've never heard of that, but, um, yeah, it's revenue that we, you know, we estimate the revenues in March, and then we adjust them in the fall, and we finalize them before we set the tax rate.
Okay, so this year we're asking for seventy-four seventeen. Do I hear a motion for seventy-four seventeen?
Can I ask why the general expense is down?
Sure.
Charlie, why is the?
I, I, because they, like I said, I, I went with the average, and from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, they averaged a thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, as of as of today, as of, well, October first, they had spent sixty, six hundred and as of today, as of, well, October first, they had spent sixty, six hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Okay, just wanna make sure, because it was a big difference.
And of course, if they overrun that.
Mm-hmm, I know, but bottom line budget, we keep here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, five hundred dollars is not gonna
Yeah, okay.
Break a three million dollar budget.
Yep. So do I hear a, a motion?
Motion to approve seven thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars for land use.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Alan Silly.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Government, building and cemetery. Uh, shall we do cemetery first? We'll put this in the ground first?
I don't know, this one's complicated.
The department asked for fifty dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Alan Silly.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Okay, general government.
Uh, this one, I, I, after thinking about this, uh, we probably should put that eight grand back in there. I think I was being a little too aggressive. Um, because technically, I'm trying to, let me see here. All the department had spent, uh, seventeen thousand, nine twenty-seven last year.
Pretty close to eighteen hundred.
Yeah, that's why I was after going, thinking that, uh, we should probably just, uh, put that back if we are going to, uh, expend all of the, uh, general government buildings expenses on that line.
Mm-hmm.
So I, like I said before, I, I took all that out of each department.
Yeah.
You mean line six eleven?
Yep.
Well, our buildings aren't getting any newer.
So you wanna put eight thousand back in?
Eighteen thousand, yeah.
Giving it thirty-four, four seventy-six.
I'm okay with that.
We're good, uh, we're doing nothing with cleaning.
We have a contract with, with somebody else, don't we, Charlie?
No, that was with.
Oh, you put all the cleaning somewhere else? No?
No, we thought about cutting back on the cleaning.
Okay.
Because they come twice and the thought was they come, they should come once.
Once, how often?
Once a month.
Oh, once a month, okay. But where is that money? I mean, you're not getting cleaning for a dollar.
That's, no, no, there's nothing.
Cleaning contract.
Oh, cleaning contract, okay. Wha- what is the cleaning sal-, oh, we used to have a salaried person.
That's right.
That.
There it is. So that line really should be zeroed out some year.
Yes.
Go away, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, one ten.
Okay.
Oh, up top, oh, sorry.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So the contract is twelve hundred.
Um,
I mean, well, honestly, you're right, Eli, twelve hundred is probably a little low. Uh, we have nine hundred dollars left.
Right now?
Yep.
I mean, with, with our new situation
Yeah.
for the foreseeable year, cleaning could entail cleaning up for, uh, with
COVID.
For COVID issues.
Yeah. Yeah, and I didn't put that, I didn't put that in there, so if you wanted to come up with that, I can understand that.
Mm-hmm.
So what do we wanna put it at, ladies and gentlemen?
This line six twelve?
This would be line six twelve.
Eighteen hundred?
Going once? Going twice? Sold for eighteen hundred dollars. Okay. And see, we, if we keep doing it under the town managers thing?
Yeah.
It, it doesn't look like we're adding to the budget.
Then we can blame him. I think that's great.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we're still under default, so that makes me happy.
You're right, it does, yes, oh, I didn't think of that, yes. I wanted to look like the hero with the budget committee.
Well, you are, look, Charlie, you're still under default, so you're still a hero.
Oh, it's way under default.
I know, that's great.
We haven't finished yet.
I know.
Okay, so the number is now at thirty-five zero seven six. Is that what we want for bottom line in that department?
I'll move that we approved thirty-five thousand, seventy-six dollars for general government buildings.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just one comment, uh, should we look at safety equipment because of COVID? Uh, we have enough there.
Do you, do you mean the PPEs?
No, safety equipment, seven forty.
Like, what kind of, what is that, that safety equipment, Charlie?
Would it be fire extinguishers?
Yeah.
What it is, fire extinguishers?
Oh, let me see here, let me go to my detail real quick. That's actually a line for a joint loss management committee.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
All right.
Okay.
You're right, that would be fire extinguishers and stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah. So Andy, no, in, and anyone else, we're required by law to have a joint loss management committee.
Yeah.
That's, that's statute.
Okay. So are we still talking about thirty-five thousand, seventy-six dollars?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Alan Silly.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Moving on.
Uh, the insurance numbers aren't ready to go. Uh, Primex actually has our, um, our rates on hold. Uh, Finance wasn't able to complete the prime certification or their P three in time and, um, which is a program that we, uh, have to respond to, so pretty much a questionnaire where Primex makes sure you have, um, certain things in place for risk management, certain policies and stuff like that. I don't, if you notice in my office, the town actually got a certificate for this in years past. Uh, anyways, we, as being part of it, we get a discount, a little bit of a percentage off, um, and, um, I was expecting to get the rate on the fifteenth, but, uh, they got it on hold because, um, we still have a couple of things that need to be worked out with Primex.
Okay.
Um, but these numbers in here, uh, I mean, we can move it forward and then just work with the budget committee. If you get through most of the budget or if we don't, we can come back to it, whatever works.
Okay, let's vote on, um, economic development. Since we have none.
Looks good to me.
What?
I'll make the motion to accept that budget line.
Hear a second.
Second.
Well, we have to.
I know.
Any further discussion?
That's a good number.
Hearing none. Alan Silly.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Fran.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Okay. Here we go with police in detail. Union salaries are pretty much set.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is, Charlie, is that number, does that number include an addition, still an additional person?
Yes.
Okay, so that one ninety-five, nine sixty-four plus the other components.
Right.
As for six people.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a little bit lower on the union is the prior, there was another employee that left that made, that had a higher salary.
What's hidden between eleven and fourteen?
You mean?
A copier.
The far left column, you know, the rows are numbered and it goes from eleven to fourteen.
It's copier, internet and cable.
Okay.
The internet and cable, years ago, I told Tony, we'll just take, we took that out.
Okay.
They, they got fiber two.
Yep.
Um, so instead of.
And it's all rolled in over on your side, on the executive.
Okay.
And, and as for like a copier, they use the copier.
In the office.
The office.
Okay.
So really, they should just be deleted.
Okay.
Okay. Be sure you remember that when the budget committee asked.
Are you hiding something?
Yeah. No. I, Chief and I went over this budget, uh, you know, we were off a little bit before and we compromised on some of the lines that we didn't. We said, okay, whoa, you know, you can't agree on everything and
Yeah.
Send some.
Oh, I'm looking at line three ninety-three.
Yeah, we sent it up to the. Uh, the, the prosecutor line, he, they went with a new prosecutor, that line's reduced.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah. Uh, I didn't agree with the matching grants, um, and, uh, the overtime line.
Okay.
In gasoline, I personally don't think prices are gonna skyrocket that much, but.
Okay, so matching grants.
I mean, they do get grants. What was your disagreement, Charlie?
They haven't got one in quite a long time.
Okay.
So that's why I left a dollar and it was.
Yeah.
All right, so we could always come up with something if.
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? Are we, uh, for the police department? Are we set with four hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars?
Make the motion to accept that.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Alan Silly.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Moving on down, we have police detail work. Which, uh, looks like, uh, three dollars.
Yeah. Uh, not sure why that was really in there. Um, there shouldn't really be an appropriation for detail that's not being paid, uh, by us.
Well.
If they, for example, the police does a detail in Holdenus, we send the bill to Holdenus.
Okay.
Right?
Right.
But does, do they still get paid out of our payroll?
They still get paid, uh, but it's, um, reimbursed.
Hmm.
Isn't that why it's part of their wages?
No, it's part, it, it's not part of their wages.
It's extra.
It's extra, right?
Yep.
It would go into their, it would, yes, it would be extra, but it's still part of what they get, they would get paid in a unless they're paid by separate check. Or this.
Yeah.
Would it not go through payroll?
No, it'll go through payroll, but, um, again, there shouldn't be an appropriate, there shouldn't be an appropriation. So, and what I mean by that, Eli, is take, for example, the average, I'll go back to the average. Uh, each year, this line has, uh, had a three thousand dollar appropriation and has only spent twenty-one hundred dollars.
Okay.
That's a nine hundred dollar taxation for something that shouldn't be.
Right, because it's all reimbursed.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a wash. It goes, goes out, comes back in.
Yeah, you're right. We shouldn't have taxpayers pay for it.
Pay for this, yeah.
Taxpayer pay for something that, you know, you're on, you're assuming you're not three thousand dollars in wages. Well, when you don't, that's a tax expense.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
That makes perfect sense.
So it's three dollars?
I make a motion for.
Right now, it's three dollars.
I make a motion to approve three dollars for de- detail work.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Alan Silly.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Now we're over to ambulance and fire department. The ambulance contract. Do we wanna do this page all at once? Or two separate votes?
Well, it's two, it's two different lines, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you should do ambulance separate.
Okay.
Motion to approve fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eight dollars.
I'll second that.
Hear a second.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Alan Silly.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye.
All right, you started this discussion, Charlie, with.
Yeah, so let's, at the beginning, we, we started, Steve came back and last week and asked me to really reassess some of the lines. So I said to him, okay, the, the salaries, because we're way off here, I'm at, he's at one ninety-five, I'm at one eighty-two. And so I said, okay, how did you come up with this number, right? I mean, and I said, how many employees, uh, what's their hours, what's their shifts, days, et cetera, et cetera, to get to that number? So he took the entire, uh, on-call pay from July So he took the entire, uh, on-call pay from July twenty-two, let's see, from August, yeah, from July last year to June of this year. So August, August twenty nineteen, August twenty nineteen to the twentieth of June, because he only had a half year.
Yeah.
Right, um, so he totaled all of that up for the average and it averaged out to eight hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Well, if you divide that by fifty-two, that gives you an average hourly per diem rate of fifteen dollars and sixty cents. And their hours, hour, uh, nine hours a day. Well, fifteen point six times nine is one forty-fourty, right? So fifteen point six times nine equals one forty-fourty. Well, you have two per diem on the shift per day. So times it by two equals twenty-eight, two eighty-eighty. Well, then you times that by three hundred and sixty-five days, it was a hundred and two thousand four ninety-two. His on-call payroll, which for twelve months in, is, uh, forty, he put down forty thousand nine one four. Uh, and his salary is thirty-nine thousand and the deputy is five thousand. That equals one eighty-seven four oh six. Okay, so if you take one oh seven, seven four oh six, times one point oh three. If you times that by one point oh, was the three percent, would come up to one ninety-three oh twenty-eight.
Okay.
I don't know, I still don't know how I came to one ninety-five, uh, but, uh, I see it a little bit better than where I was at one eighty-two. I strongly believe his guys need a raise, they should get a raise, it's been a couple of years since that, the firefighters have got a raise.
So what are you proposing now for your figure?
I, I would come up to the one ninety-three, personally, I, I, I see it.
Yeah, I, I do too.
Yeah.
Okay, you have one ninety-five.
No, no, I had one.
One eighty-two.
Because I just took, I just.
The department request is one ninety-five.
Yeah. So you're gonna put in one ninety-three?
One ninety-three oh two eight.
One, okay. For town manager, Eli.
That's a formula.
I know, but you can change it, you can eliminate the formula, just put in the number.
One ninety three oh eight, you said?
Oh, two eight.
Oh, two.
Eight.
Eight. Okay.
Uh, we're still off on heat and oil. Uh, I said to him that, uh, if I looked at your budget today, you had, they had about, uh, fifty-four hundred dollars remaining for the rest of the year. I don't think you're gonna spend fifty-four hundred dollars over the next three months. Um, particularly when the department only averages seventy-two hundred dollars in heat and oil. Uh, I know the rate is locked in for this building through our group with the school. Uh, I think it was two oh six, uh, per gallon. Um, I also don't think the building is gonna be used as much next year as, it's been closed. Uh, we don't really need to hold public meetings there anymore like we did in the past. Um, you know, now everyone can meet at the water and sewer conference room. So, I'm willing to put forth that the heat and oil should go down.
That makes sense.
And, and overall, that's only really where we differ with these budgets. The buildings and grounds expense, I mean, that, that still has, uh, buildings and ground still has thirty-five hundred dollars left and the grant of five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, I know Steve might encumber some funds out of that grant line to try to get a grant writer um, later on in the year. Um, I talked to him the other day about that, that we, you just gotta get, gotta get the contract in place before the end of the year, get the vote, vote of the selectmen to encumber it. And see if you can get some grants.
Okay. The mutual aid dues are set now?
As far as I know.
Okay. What? I don't know.
Charlie, are the FICA and Medicare lines adjusted to, uh, uh, the new salary line?
Yeah, if you, if you look the formula.
Yeah, yeah, should be.
It's I eight.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
FICA.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, two point oh eight on the, on the oil next year.
So we have a bottom line of three thou, three hundred nine thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars. Is that correct, Charlie?
Um, yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve three hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars for the fire department.
Well, I had seven fifty-eight, Eli, what did you have?
I have seven thirty-three.
Well, I asked if it's one nine three.
Oh, I know why, I came up on, hold on a second, I came up on a few of the utilities. Uh, the water, I came up to four hundred. Yeah. The electricity, let's see.
You didn't do anything with sewer?
Yeah, I came up a little bit with the, the water.
Yeah, you came up with four hundred.
Yeah.
Now, uh, the sewer, you left alone.
Yeah.
And the electricity, what did you do there?
I didn't change it.
Okay, so now we have three thousand three hundred nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
But if you think we need to go up on the electricity, um, now's the time to do it.
My, my question is going to be,
Mm-hmm.
Um, do we have a scheduled rate increase?
Might, yeah, just, that line probably has to go up a little bit. Um, eh, right now, that's at forty, there's only three hundred dollars left and there's still three more months of billing, so, I mean, if you.
Okay.
I mean, I could see that line going up to six grand, like Steve said.
Ladies and gentlemen, how do you feel about that?
Fine with that, I'll change my motion to.
Wait a minute, yeah, I got six thousand, yeah, it just went down one hundred, okay. So change your motion.
To three hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and fifty-eight.
While we do that, I'd like to revisit salaries.
Salaries, yes, sir, Mr. Silly.
Thank you. I would like to look at salaries in reference to the per diem. I would like to incredi, increase the per diem pay by one dollar an hour, which would equal five thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Wait, increase per diem a dollar an hour?
Yes.
Okay.
Why?
One second, and that's, yes, if he goes up a dollar, so that's fifteen point six.
Alan?
Yes.
What's the reason?
Right now, shifts are not being filled, which means there we cannot respond properly. Case in point, a three alarm fire that we did not roll any personnel or equipment.
Which was it, Alan?
What's that?
Uh, was that an in-town fire or, or not?
No, it was not, it was holding a school. But it was a mutual aid that we did not.
I was just curious.
So wasn't it a lack of personnel, so you think if you pay them more, we're gonna get more personnel?
Uh, it wouldn't hurt to try. I'm not saying it's the answer, but people are going to places that pay more, um, that is a fact. What I'm coming down to, I don't want to put a price on somebody's life, because we cannot respond, even in town, let alone to fire or whatnot, in, in emergency situation, uh, minutes count.
So it's, you want a five thousand dollar increase, is that correct, Alan?
Fifty-eight twenty-four, to be exact.
Twenty-four. How do we feel about fifty-eight twenty-four?
Wait a minute, though.
I'd like to get Chief Heath.
Yeah, I would like to get input from the chief.
Well, if you go up, the average hourly rate is fifteen point six. So if you go up a dollar across the board, you gotta, it's gotta be sixteen point six.
Yeah.
Across the board with everybody, correct? Not just per diem.
Just per diem is what I'm talking about.
There, there's not a separate line for per diem?
I understand that, but it's figured that way.
So we will hold.
Yeah, we, we should talk, get to Chief Heath.
We will get the, uh, chief's input.
Okay.
So moving on at this point.
Thank you.
Can we move, can we, now, never mind, we'll just do the whole bottom line.
Uh, building inspector, emergency manager.
Alan's right, it only increases at nine hundred and forty-eight bucks.
Nine hundred and forty-eight, he just said five.
Five, he just said five five thousand.
Well, I came up with, well, if you go to sixteen sixty, if you go up a buck, his average hourly per diem rate is fifteen sixty.
But why are you gonna be paying per diem more than, than the regular guys?
Again, I would really like to talk to Keith, you know, I, I, I really, you know, care about what Alan is saying, because I totally support, we need to be.
And, you know, I'll just make a point that I did not figure the per diem at nine hours a day either, so. Way less.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm more than willing to revisit this, because I do think you, you can't short, short sight, uh, safety, but I would like to get Chief Heath's.
Yeah, we, we know that there is a personnel problem. Um, if what we've Chief Heath has said that he has been covering of certain hours. So that means we don't have the staff. Well, actually, I think getting the chief's input and what this would do is something that we should wait on at this time.
Right.
Until we get his input. Okay.
Um, Eli?
Yep.
You're up for just a minute, it is approaching six o'clock, and given that we're gonna have to meet again, can we, you know, end this at like six and, and set up another meeting?
Time flies.
What?
Time flies.
Yeah, exactly, when you're having fun, not having a ball, but.
It's five forty-five five, five forty-six.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you wanna.
Couple of quickies, quick ones.
Okay, uh, we've got building inspector and emergency management.
You can do that one.
I'll make a motion to approve eighteen thousand eight hundred and two dollars for building inspector.
I'll second that.
Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none. Alan Silly.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Okay, emergency management, one thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Alan Silly.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Public Works. Uh, do we want to do that tonight?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve two hundred and twenty-six thousand ninety-nine dollars.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Alan Silly.
Aye.
Andy Fitch.
Aye.
Fran Newton.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Highway and streets. We're showing a decrease over the department and a definite decrease over what was voted in in twenty twenty.
I think mainly that's because the building expenses rolled in somewhere else, so.
Yep.
Um, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion to approve two hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and ninety-three.
Yeah, the water is down to a dollar. And the building expense is down to a dollar.
And street improvement line is down, that's, uh, that's what we're getting from the state.
Yep.
Yeah, now, we know what we're, do we know what we're getting this coming year from the state?
Yeah. Yep. It's their fiscal year. So they say, this is what you're getting from July to June. So what was that number, I just put it in the budget. Right, so technically, uh, for six months out of next year, they probably could give us a little bit more, but.
No, I'm just looking for.
You know, I can't anticipate that.
Yeah. I just don't want to, uh, say, oh, yeah, fifty-four, seven ninety-one. And then there's nothing.
Yeah. No, you bet, you better have been lower than higher.
Yeah, and if you see what I mean, if you go down to line four, four, five, we have highway gar, garage internet is at twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Does that include the phone?
No, that's just the, that's just the, uh, the telephone line is the one, it's four ninety-one.
Yeah. So there, there are different, in the past, there've been some differences. Okay, so we have two sixteen, two ninety-three. Do I hear a motion?
I already mo.
Oh, we did, didn't we, let's discuss. Okay, we seconded it and everything?
Yes, we just discussion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Alan Selly.
Hi.
Andy Fitch.
Hi.
Brad Newton.
Hi.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Hi.
Eli Badger says aye. Nine minutes to go. We have town mechanic and street light lighting.
Oh, one of my favorite lines.
Charlie?
Uh, the mechanic, uh, that's a union position, uh, so that's pretty straightforward. Uh, we came down a little bit on the overtime as it hasn't really been utilized very much. Expectation ours, expectations are that it probably won't be used that much, but.
How come that went, how come you go with that?
Uh, it, because the overtime went down.
Oh, okay.
Right, right, right. Um, approve sixty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars for town mechanic.
Second that.
I'll second.
Oh, we've got two seconds?
Good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Alan Selly.
Hi.
Andy Fitch.
Hi.
Brad Newton.
Hi.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Hi.
Eli Badger says aye. Now, we're at street light. Charlie?
Well, we got, I, I got eight minutes, so, uh.
You can do this in eight minutes.
I'll try, this is a peculiar line, uh, in the budget. The way it was sort of proposed to me is that, um. The electric utility users basically pay. Uh, for the lights in town to stay on and not the town. Uh, but in turn, the town also doesn't send national electric a utility bill. Or excuse me, a tax bill.
It's in lieu of taxes.
Yes, so it's in lieu, it's in lieu of taxes. Prior public officials came up with this number. It was about that time, I think recently, I think actually our prior superintendent calculated that. Electric, if you had in the, they might have to pay a little bit more. Because the taxation would probably be a little bit higher. Um, when you add in all their assets, but it gets kinda tricky because. The building split three ways between water, sewer, and DPW, um, so. There's no taxation involved because I make sure and we, we make sure it's on the revenue side of things, so it's a complete wash.
So is there any reason to change it?
There's not, there's no reason, I mean.
Okay.
I mean, if we made it a hundred thousand dollars. Wouldn't make a difference to me because I just, just make sure it's on the revenue.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's budget minus revenue. Tax levy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I'll make a motion to approve forty-two thousand dollars for street lighting.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Alan Selly.
Hi.
Andy Fitch.
Hi.
Brad Newton.
Hi.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Hi.
Eli Badger says aye. Well, we're down to five minutes.
Well, we could do health officer, animal control, and general assistance.
There we go. Health officer, animal control, general assistance.
I'll make a motion to accept. Health officer. Budget.
Second.
Do I hear? Any discussion? Hearing none. Alan Selly.
Hi.
Andy Fitch. No, he's there.
Aye.
Brad Newton.
Hi.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Hi.
Animal control.
Did you vote, Eli?
Oh, Eli Badger says aye.
Make a motion to approve twelve hundred dollars for animal control.
I'll second.
Um, any discussion? No, Alan Selly.
Hi.
Andy Fitch.
Hi.
Brad Newton.
Hi.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Hi.
Eli Badger says aye, general assistance.
Okay, uh. Earlier this year, we gave the welfare director, uh, I think, a, a little bit of a raise. Uh, and, but the big line is the general assistant line, long been budgeted for twenty thousand dollars. I finally. Extended myself out there a little bit with that one and said, okay, if we really wanted to reduce the budget in areas, this is a particular line that probably. Could be reduced, uh, as you can see, it only averages about twenty-two hundred dollars. Uh, a month, or excuse me, a year over four years, that's because the welfare director. Point blank, no, there's no handouts, I guess, you would say, it's, it's not handing it out, there's strict guidelines. That you have to qualify in order to receive assistance. Uh, there's really no judgment calls with the director. Uh, and I think that you can see that with that, you know, small amount that's been, um. You know, paid, uh, right now, um. I mean, right now, she's only expended two hundred dollars as of ten one, now, when I went back, I went back to the director and said. You know, we reduced this, she's fine with it, but she also warned me that, look, if we have to pay, we have to pay. Right?
That's it.
That's it, right, I mean, sure, it could be twenty-five thousand dollars.
Or it could be eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I could be, uh, but you, you know, by law, they have to pay, uh, we have to provide the assistance, so.
I guess my only concern is with increasing cases of COVID, but you know, five thousand still seems like it should cover it.
Yeah, remember, we had to approve a, uh, new document. Um, on this, and yes, they tightened up the rules quite a bit.
Yeah.
And, yeah, Suzie seems to. Be right on top of it.
Okay, you've got one minute.
I'll make a motion to approve twelve thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars for general assistance.
Oh, Andy. Go ahead.
It's been seconded, seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none. Alan Selly.
Hi.
Andy Fitch.
Hi.
Brad Newton.
Hi.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Hi.
And since then, um. Fran set a time limit?
May, may I have thirty seconds?
Uh, no, yes, of course, Alan.
Uh, I'm sorry, um, I'd like to revise the figure that I put out there for the, uh, salary line for per diem. Uh, to reflect eighteen hours a day. Instead of the sixteen that I had figured, my new figure would be six, five, five, two.
Okay.
Things correct.
All right. So when are we gonna meet again?
When does the budget committee meet, Charlie?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Can we meet Monday?
Do we want to meet Monday?
Do we, I mean, it shouldn't take a long time to finish.
Okay. It's Monday.
Monday the twenty-sixth at four o'clock.
Yeah.
Um, folks, I'm taking Monday off, so if we wanna do it a little earlier, we can do that.
Okay.
Pick a time.
Three o'clock?
Three o'clock sounds good.
All right.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say seven thirty in the morning.
No, no time.
We used to have those, Fran.
I, I remember them.
Yeah, I, I'm sure Fran loved them.
I did, I did.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, Monday at three o'clock.
Okay, we got quite a bit done.
We did.
Okay, bye, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.